Good morning, everybody. It's June twentieth, nine AM. We have a flag, so it's kind of tough to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but we've got a different location today. But we do have Julianne Krebs from the Eastside Church to do our morning prayer. So why don't we all raise it?
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me to come. I wanted to read Psalms forty-six, ten, and eleven. Be still and know that I am God. I will be honored by every nation. I will be honored throughout the world. The Lord of heaven's armies is here among us. The God of Israel is our fortress. And Lord, we are thankful that you are here among us, and we ask that your words will be spoken through each one of us here there that will be here in this meeting today. We ask that your will be done because you know what's best for this county, for this this whole city and everything else that goes on it through these meetings, Lord. And we just ask for your blessing and that your will will be done. We say this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Anybody from the public?
Oh, you didn't know you had two hats on? That's what I just said. I mean, I'm too handsome. Okay, sorry, Mike.
So you're making a mistake.
Do we need to take up a collection for a mayor?
Oh, sure.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, do you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass a consent.
Can I well second it?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Is Kathy Pocket?
Kathy won't be here today, but we do have Rich online.
Great.
I am on here. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning. I was gonna see if I could share my screen with you guys, but I can't, so.
I can give you, I think.
Access? Awesome.
See if that gives you the option now.
It does. So hopefully you guys can see my screen that says Cook County across the top, and it says agreed?
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully that is there for you guys. Well, thank you guys for taking the time this morning. I've been working with the Insurance Committee, and I'm Rich on with WHA Insurance. We do all the benefits for you guys. And over this last year, we've had a new program, Oregon Paid Leave, come into play. It feels like we just had this meeting yesterday, but it has been, you know, a few months at this point in time. We are starting to see the renewals and whatnot come out for Oregon Paid Leave. And with Hartford, who we currently have, we are seeing a little bit of an increase this year with Hartford. One of the other things that came up in going through the program is because Oregon Paid Leave is a twelve-week program or basically ninety days, there was a gap that was discovered because the counties were basically long-term disability plan kicks in at a hundred and eighty days. So what we found was, you know, somebody was on long basically the paid leave Oregon for ninety days. All of a sudden, they drop off without any income or anything until the long-term disability policy kicked in at a hundred and eighty days. So working with the committee, we did go out to market and look at all of the options available and went through all the analysis of all the different programs. And what you can see, this is just kind of a summary here in front of you. What we came back with, you can see the Hartford here with the renewal and everything. And then we have the Hartford renewal alongside of it. And then, of course, there's the recommendation from the committee was to go with Mutual of Omaha and move the waiting period on the long-term disability from a hundred and eighty days down to ninety days to dove in kind of with the paid leave Oregon. So that's kind of what we're looking at today. We just needed to get your guys' approval to do so. Going through the benefits, which is on the next side here, we can see that, you know, looking at the life insurance, which is currently one times earning is actually with Mutual of Omaha, a little bit cheaper. So the life would be a savings for the county, which is one of the reasons why we're looking at the Mutual of Omaha side. As far as the voluntary life goes, it would basically be the same benefits at the same rate, so it would not impact employees. We would guarantee anything they've already elected over to Mutual of Omaha in the move moving over. And then on the long-term disability side, there is a little bit of a slight increase there. With Hartford, they were actually asking for a fairly substantial increase, which you can see here, kind of going from twenty-eight thousand annual cost up to thirty-three. With Mutual, it comes in at about thirty, so it is a little bit over the current, but not dramatically over. And keep in mind that is actually increasing the benefit. It's moving that waiting period from a hundred and eighty days on the long-term disability down to the ninety to dovetail in with the current paid leave Oregon program. And then the next piece here is the paid leave Oregon piece of it. With currently with Hartford, they basically asked for about a thirty percent increase on the paid leave Oregon. And in a lot of cases, that's been very consistent. With paid leave Oregon, it was a brand-new benefit effective September third of last year. With that program, basically, it allowed for medical leave for the employee. It allowed for family leave and safe leave as well. With the family leave, it did allow for bonding with a child. And anyone that had a baby within twelve months prior to September, they could take that twelve weeks starting in September. So we have seen an influx of claims just in the first part of the program, which is what's driving these costs a little bit. That we do plan on them settling down as we do move forward. Currently this year, the state is still at a one percent, so that would be point six from the employee and point four from the employer. The recommendation is to move to Mutual of Omaha. It is slightly over the one percent. Keep in mind, though, with the Mutual of Omaha and with the Hartford, it does include FICA. So they pay the FICA taxes for the county as well as do all of the W twos. So it does make administration easier for the county on that side of the program. It also has, with the private plans, we're finding that the turnaround time for employees getting paid is a lot faster, and it gives reporting and everything to the county so that, you know, you kind of know what's going on along the way. So it's actually been working very smoothly. And just a reminder that the state plan does remove, renew one-one of twenty-twenty-five. I see that we put the wrong date in there of twenty-twenty-three. It should be twenty-twenty-four. So the latter part of this year, the state is going to come out with the twenty-twenty-five numbers for next year. I anticipate those going up because we've heard from the state that they are a little bit on the underfunded side at this point in time. They've had more claims, I think, than what they're taking in. So we'll see more on that as the year progresses. So really, in meeting with the the Insurance Committee, going through all of the options, we did look at all the different carriers. Their recommendation was to move to Mutual of Omaha, and they just wanted to have your guys' approval to do so so we could continue the private plan with the Oregon Paid Leave and then move over the life and the disability to make it all work well for the employees. So it wouldn't be a takeaway from any employees. It would actually be enhanced benefit for those that are in need of the long-term disability. So I know that's a lot of information, but I just wanted to present it all to you guys and open it up for questions.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't remember reading the information.
Yeah. Do you entertain a motion?
What would be a good motion here on this?
So if you'd like to accept a recommendation, what you might make a motion to do is a motion to approve the change for the long-term disability and Oregon Paid Leave insurance programs from Hartford to Mutual of Omaha.
Starting in September of twenty-twenty-four.
And so we have this in the minutes. My understanding is if that's where you want to go, that motion would include changing the start date of the long-term disability from a hundred and eighty days to ninety days. Now, I'm not advocating for that, but if that's what you want, then we're collecting the minutes.
So.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just out of, as a caution, I might also recommend a motion to delegate authority to someone, one individual. If there needs to be any sort of documentation signed by the county, that doesn't have to come back to it.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, I make a motion to recommend Seth to go ahead and be a signature for Hartford or whatever you want.
Move it to mutual.
Any discussion? Oh, do we get a second?
You seconded it?
Yeah, you just wanted to write on the first one. You wanted a separate one. I think for the sake of the minutes, let's have it a separate motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
The second piece that I was asked to go over with you guys was in regards to kind of what to anticipate for the upcoming renewal. We did renew July one of twenty-twenty-three, which was last July. With that renewal, we had a lot of things happen. We had actually Pacific Source originally came out with about a twelve percent increase. We did go out to market. We did market everything to all the other carriers. Providence came back extremely aggressive on the program. And so in looking at that, Pacific Source agreed to move the renewal down to a rate hold as of July of last year. In further discussions, Providence did revise their quote again to actually go negative. And then there was some committee talk around basically, well, with deductibles and out-of-pockets running on a calendar year, it may be beneficial to move the county's program from a July renewal to a January renewal. With that, Pacific Source did agree to move to a January renewal in an eighteen-month contract with basically a rate hold for that period of time. You know, what that basically meant, though, is that by doing so, it it put us about eighteen percent under where we needed to be in regards to rates, because when we look at the claims experience, it kind of dictated that we did need about an eighteen percent increase. The county had budgeted for a ten percent that year. So we kind of recommended that they put that aside. I don't think that has happened, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had some sort of cushion in case we needed it for the upcoming year. Part of that, as well as WHA and myself, we recommended that we did quarterly meetings just to do an update on the claims experience because our hope would be that the claims experience would get better over the period of time. Unfortunately, that's not the case. So in looking at the claims experience, I'm just going to give you guys a brief overview. There's nothing we need to do at this point in time with this. It's more educational for you and to kind of give you an overview of what we may anticipate here coming up in the next few months. We get the renewal for January one of twenty-twenty-five. So what I have here up here in front of you is basically the carriers look at a twenty-four-month period. So if we go back and look at the prior twelve months, we were sitting at about an eighty-nine percent loss ratio. Moving forward into the current twelve months, you can see that that loss ratio went basically from an eighty-nine up to a ninety-one. And so we're actually moving up in the loss ratio side of it. And if we go looking at kind of July forward to today, we're at a ninety-three percent. So what's happened is is our claim is progressively gotten a little bit worse as we've moved forward. The other thing is, is that the costs of healthcare have gone up. Medical trends were around about eight percent. They're going up to about twelve percent. We are finding a shortage of providers and the hospital contracts that are coming up for negotiation. They're asking for, you know, thirty percent increase at this point from what I've been hearing. So the the costs of healthcare are going up. When we take where we're kind of at with the experience that we have today, kind of the increase in experience, the fact that we were basically kind of eighteen percent under on the last renewal, the anticipated projected increase at this point is probably in the thirties. So I know that's not information that you guys want to hear, but I do want to make sure that we are aware of it in talking, you know, through this portion of it. We'll work with the carriers with Pacific Source, who's been a great partner for the county to make sure that we minimize this as much as possible. We've been in open conversations throughout this last year with them. Just making sure that, you know, we're dotting all of our i's, crossing all our t's. But just wanted to, you know, make sure that the committee is aware of kind of where we're at at this point in time and kind of how we got there. In addition unto that, on the dental side, we're kind of seeing the same thing. If we look back, you know, we were at a ninety-one percent in the prior twelve. It did move up to a ninety-six percent and then up into a ninety-seven here when we're looking at the plan year-to-date from July forward. And keep in mind, these numbers that we're looking at here are just raw numbers. Dollars paid in by the county and dollars paid out for actual claims. None of these numbers include any type of administration done by the carrier. It doesn't include any stop-loss or any state fees or anything like federal fees or anything else goes into that. So that actually is on top of all this. So when we're looking at, you know, a ninety-seven percent loss ratio on the dental, it's probably going to equate out to eleven to twelve percent increase on the medical. Like I said, bet you it'll probably be in that thirty range on the projection side. So just wanted to go over it with you, just making sure that I'm keeping you guys in the loop of what we're seeing and where we're kind of headed at this point, and then to answer any questions that you have.
I guess I have a question of Christina on the budget. Have we taken, I mean, these are pretty drastic. Have we taken that into consideration?
We have been working with Rich since last year. We were expecting a logic reason. We did budget twenty-five percent increase in budget because part of the calendar versus fiscal next fiscal year has a twelve-and-a-half percent twelve-and-a-half percent increase. So while thirty percent is huge, we did already the twenty-five percent in the budget. And you're, like I said, working with the carrier to try and get it to absolutely as low as possible. So, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So just we will be working with the carriers and more to come on this. We'll probably get the renewal in the next few months. Just want to make sure everybody was kind of aware of the situation. We do have the option of changing deductibles and plan design if we need to. But Pacific Source has been a great partner, and I think that they will help us get to where we need to be at renewal time is my hope at this point. So but just wanted to make sure that we had it on the table and everybody was up to speed. That's it for me.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Yeah, glad you're hearing that.
Sorry. I'm like, I have to be the lucky one to do this? Okay, but we'll try to minimize it as much as possible.
It's everywhere.
It is. It is. That's the sad part. This next year, we're seeing a lot of the small group renewals coming out in the teens to twenties, too. So it's not just you guys. It's everyone. Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Tim, you want to come up to the table?
Who remembers Mutual of Omaha Wild Kingdom? Few fans in the room.
I was going to say, do you have to say we remember? Or we got to go back to Lawrence Welk, too?
Well, that, yeah. Every Sunday night.
Good morning. So before you is first, I think, the adoption of the extension, Agricultural Extension Service District budget. On May twenty-second, the Budget Committee met to review the proposed budget and conduct a public meeting. There was no public comments regarding the budget, and the Budget Committee adopted it as presented. And so that's what you have before you today. You also have an order adopting the budget, making the appropriation and levying the taxes. And if I have the same copy you have, we accidentally put the wrong titles at the bottom.
Now, I have a question. So I have a thing from Rebecca that they want to hire and kind of an intern for this summer for the busy season. Is that going to be what is in line for extra help you have budgeted for thirteen thousand? What is, I know we took out the office assistant that OSU wanted, but you have here extra help. Is that going to come out of that budget item?
No. So the interns are through OSU. They get an OSU paycheck. And so the funds covering the intern is actually in line seventeen, the intergovernmental services.
Oh, okay.
The hundred thousand dollar transfer.
Okay.
Go to OSU.
Okay. So there is no change to the budget with that?
No, because we knew that at a time. Actually, we actually budgeted for two interns, and it sounds like they're only going to end up with one.
Yeah, I just, I, yeah, okay, perfect.
Do we need to, Eric, do we need to open the public hearing to approve this or?
So this is an order adopting the budget, I think. Let's do that and see if there's any sort of public comment. Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's better.
Open.
Public is fine?
So you're here for public?
Okay, public.
You put your other hat on in there. Anybody online have any questions or comments?
I make a motion to adopt the budget for fiscal year two, two thousand twenty-four to twenty-five of the Cook County Ag Extension Service District.
Do you want order number in on that?
Oh, yeah, order number. I forgot my part. Order number two oh two four dash thirty-two. Thank you. Okay.
Any discussion?
Well, sometime today, so there you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Next?
Here on next.
All right. So sorry for the tardiness of this letter. Hopefully you either got it yesterday on the day off or first thing this morning. But before you is a draft letter written by the County's Natural Resource Advisory Committee in response to an open public comment period regarding some grazing allotment permit renewals in the Camp Creek South Fork Crooked River area. It involves seven allotments, three permities. The scoping for this process actually occurred in February, thirty-day scoping period, followed by the BLM responding to those scoping comments and then announcing the end of May, the public comment period for the draft EA decision. That's what this letter is responding to is the draft EA. The draft EA looked at four alternatives. A status quo alternative. Alternative two was included status quo with lots of range improvement practices. Alternative three actually took one of the allotments and put it under a ten-year rest period. And then alternative four is the no graze alternative, which they have to include all the time anyway. In a presentation last week by BLM to the Natural Resource Advisory Committee, there were lots of concerns raised about the ten-year rest alternative. Lots of opposition primarily because turns out that grazing permittee and the grazing prescriptions that have been written and followed by the permittee have been followed a hundred percent. The permittee is not out of compliance with any grazing protocols. The problem with the South Fork Crooked River in the canyon is basically unadulterated horse use. Whether they're wild horses, whether they're horses that have been released by the public over time because they didn't want to or couldn't afford to feed them anymore. No one's quite sure. The liget table herd management area, which is the wild horse area out in that part of the world, its herd management objective is ten to fifteen horses. And last week, the BLM told us their best guess is over a hundred. So easily a tenfold increase in population. That's there twelve months out of the year. So where the grazing, the permittee is there three weeks in the springtime, basically before really we get green up and early growth, the horses are there twelve months out of the year. And the BLM told us they did not, did not want to include any horse recommendations in this EA because they didn't want to tie any appeals that might occur in the future regarding horse management to grazing permittee permits getting renewed for the next ten years. So that's why they separated the two issues. The problem with separating the two issues is you don't really get to analyze what's causing the problem and then address the problem if you want to improve condition of those areas. So the letter sort of lays out some of that stuff. The other issue is these are ten-year permits. And the last time this area got its permit renewals was twenty-four years ago. So the concern of the permittees is, well, okay, if we even agreed to a ten-year permit renewal, what guarantees do we have that at the end of ten years, we will actually get to revisit this? So lots of issues laid out here. Ultimately, what this letter asks for by you guys, the commission, is a ninety-day extension to the public comment period, which would allow engagement through coordination between BLM and the county commission, you guys, to see if there aren't better solutions than what was analyzed in the draft DA. As the letter explains, the reason for the ninety-day extension, typically it's thirty or forty-five days, is because the committee recognizes BLM is entering fire season. And with the staff, their staff probably dedicating much of their time in the next three months to potential wildfire fighting, we didn't feel that they probably would have time to address this. So asking for what we think is a realistic amount of time puts us into September, hopefully out of fire season or at least reduced activity. And so BLM would be able to dedicate more time back to this process and come up with some better solutions than what's being proposed.
But we're not posing anything. We're just saying, look at the wild, wild horse.
What the letter is proposing is that BLM work with the county to come up with better alternatives or better solutions than whether it be addressing the horse issue, whether it be elevating the horse issue to because what they said is, well, we want to do, we'll do an EA later on the wild horse issue. Well, you may enter in the negotiation some agreement of what is later mean. We also ask that maybe to pull off the Camp Creek allotment, which is where the horses are. Take it from the other six that are a part of this update because the other six really aren't having any negative grazing recommendations being analyzed. It's, and so pull that one out and separate it from and deal with what are the issues of of the South Fork Crooked River red paring areas and other kind of things, and then come back with a better analysis, better plan.
The EA is flawed because they have not identified the species that is causing the problem. So to take a piece of property and leave it ten years without cattle is not solving the problem at all. And the letter, I thought, was written very well, and actually, one of the gals on the committee to read the letter informed me on our beaver thing that she was the Wild Horse Coalition. So I feel that the letter was very well done because we are embracing both sides. So I recommend that we approve the letter, public testimony regarding the grazing permit renewals in Camp Creek.
Second. I'm just, it's a quick discussion. So I just know in the past, we've gotten sideways with the whole wild horse deal, and it turned into be quite a, quite a mess. Do you foresee this going down that same route, or are we like, Commissioner Hemrick said?
Yeah, I always tread lightly.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
But with, with this particular issue, because we have on the County's Natural Resource Advisory Committee at least two folks that that represent and express issues about wild horses. And one of those individuals was a part of writing this letter and made the actual recommendations about the actual recommendations about the DNA testing, are these true wild horses, are they released horses? Some of you have been around long enough, the folks have even said, well, these aren't really wild horses, they're horses released by Ronnie Raymond a long time ago because they were part of his Buckins deal.
But that's why it's good, because we are embracing all of those, and it's a good letter, so I.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with him.
And, and I get it. I mean, that is a touchy subject.
Well, and the county in its last agreement with those groups said you wouldn't touch wild horse.
That's where I was, that's where I was headed with this, is that we were pretty clear that we would stay out of those things.
But it's very clear that at least the folks that are currently engaged, that represent that community, are interested in better solutions than penalizing grazing management, the livestock permittee.
Correct.
So.
Perfect.
I think the EA is flawed, in my opinion, because they aren't identifying, you know, bring it out in the public, this is, this is the problem, you know, and that's, that's what I don't like about it. Okay, so I made a motion.
Nice, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Tim, for doing this.
Yeah.
John? All righty, John Slace, Cook County Assessor for the record. Good morning, commissioners. I'll start with this first one here, which is our annual cartography contract that we have with Department of Revenue, and this is for our cartography and mapping services. You can see on some of the background there, given some of the information, you know, this is what, we use these guys to complete our partition changes, subdivisions, legal correction, stuff like that, on the mapping side, which is, you know, we want to get that legally corrected best that we can. So anyhow, we've had the state for about four years at least at this point, haven't had any issues with them, love the service. They've charged us seventy dollars for a few years now, it will go up to eighty at some point, they told us that when we came onboard several years ago. And at that time, prior to these guys, prior to the state, we had Jefferson County actually doing our cartography rate. Eighty dollars an hour, so I've shared that story before, but, so we're still sitting good, reduce the hours a little bit to two hundred twenty-five, comes to about sixteen thousand on that. Just need approval on that, get your safety on that.
For me, I make a motion to approve the November service agreement contract, DOR dash zero seven seven dash twenty-four.
And I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll kick in with the next one. So this is our, our camera system, our computer assisted mass appraisal software system that we have with Helion based out of Salem. And as you know, we did a conversion with them back in 2020, so we're about four years into it. We've really enjoyed these guys as well and, and their software, and we're not the only department that uses it. We also use this in conjunction with the finance department, so, so we do a seventy-thirty split on this one here. So there is a bit of a change on this one, I've had some email conversation with Eric a little bit to see if we could extend this contract, so I didn't have to keep coming back and Eric didn't have to deal with this every year. So we actually got Helion to do like a three-year timeframe on it with a cost of living increase to it, basically. That's where this one's at. So I'm asking for approval on our annual software contract with you.
Okay, and you worked with Christina and Eric, so I will make a motion to sign and renew the assessor office software service contract with Helion, Calion?
Helion.
Helion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one last question, I'm not, I can't remember, maybe Eric has the answer, John, as far as who gets the documents to the commissioners to sign?
Sure.
I have from what you had already sent to me in the packet or in the ready to sign.
Thank you. Wrong presentation. Thank you.
All right. Sarah, are you presenting?
I am doing a brief presentation here. This item, solid waste application for exposure fee credit, is moved each year, and it usually happens when we decide what we want to waive for these nonprofits at the end of June. We send out a correspondence email inviting those particular nonprofits that we have listed in the, I guess, in a email that I have from previous years, asking if they want to apply, they fill out the application, they provide a five oh one C three as well. We received, I believe, three in our packet, and so we have three that came back, and so I just wanted to bring that forth to you guys and see if you wanted to approve it as well, or what amount number you want to approve them for. In previous years, you have approved seven hundred and fifty dollars per each nonprofit. We have had one nonprofit, I believe, come back the second time around, asking for a little bit more, a couple of months down the line, that you guys did also approve. They have requested higher amounts than what you guys have normally approved from the seven fifty per each nonprofit, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention and see what it is that you guys want to provide to these nonprofits for the waiving. And then I, we do have Jackie, in case there's anything else that she wants to mention, but otherwise, we just have to make sure that Jackie knows the amount that we approve them for, so she can put it into her system under the landfill, put it to be fees.
So we have the community fund, and this would be, this could be an allocation out of the community fund, because I know two of these are struggling, so I'm not sure what the rest of you feel, but because we've established and budgeted, this is something that we could do more if we wanted to. So like I say, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's a good place to get your resources.
Yeah, and like I say, I know two of them are extremely struggling, so it's up to, and we have that, and that enables us to say yes or to say no, so.
Well, it looks like the senior center is the only one that's above the.
Yeah. So what did they ask for last, what did we, did you guys do seven fifty last year?
Seven fifty was last year, and the year before that was seven fifty.
And what did they ask for last year?
I believe they always ask for the maximum amount, which is three thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you ask for what you, you know, you want to get, so, or like.
So.
Look, there's Jackie.
Hey, Jackie.
So last year, each account was given fifteen hundred dollars in credit for fee waivers, and like, like it was mentioned, the only one that uses the full amount is the Pramville Senior Center?
What I put in front of you was some numbers that Jackie got to me just recently, as to see what we have done previously as well with that, because I wanted to make sure that we have the right financial information kind of going into it, just in case we had to allocate any additional funds or anything like that for this, for this matter.
So last year, they were credited fifteen hundred, not seven fifty?
Yeah.
Jackie?
Yeah, that's what Jackie said.
It was fifteen hundred.
Okay.
And yes, if I made a, if I could make a suggestion, it's, so Pramville Senior Center, like I mentioned, is the one that utilizes all their funds. The other one that might come close would be the Humane Society, the Ocho Coast, Best Care, and Redemption House never even come close. So you might look at maybe minimizing their balances if you're looking to give a higher credit limit to some of those that are struggling.
We did not receive an application from Redemption House this year, we just, from the Senior Center, Best Care, and then Humane Society, Thrift Store, were the three.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm sorry, Jackie, go ahead.
I, Redemption House usually forgets, and then they'll come in later and ask for their fee waiver.
But they didn't use their fifteen hundred dollar credit last year?
No, and I think, I gave those amounts to Sarah what they used last year.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, oh, the email, okay, I was looking at that.
Yeah, I printed it out, and sent it back in, and that's what she, she was able to provide the numbers of what they have kind of used.
Okay, perfect.
I'd say we just keep it at fifteen hundred, and then if, if the other ones start getting egregious and we're spending fifteen hundred on everybody, maybe we need to have a conversation, but it sounds like everybody, besides the senior center, they've, they've been struggling a little bit, so I, I don't want, I don't see any reason why we didn't help them.
So fifteen hundred for the three nonprofits so far that have applied?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they don't use it, they're not getting anything out of it.
So we need, so do we, we need a motion that out of the community fund, we will appropriate fifteen hundred for, for Pramville Senior Center, Best Care, and Humane Society.
Yeah, okay, and then we can put that at the end of the year, we don't spend it all, we can, we can, we can have additional dollars.
Yeah, that's fine, for right now.
Second.
Tim, what are you doing back there?
What are you doing back there?
Quippling, quippling, candy crush.
Get off Insta and let's pay attention.
No candy crush playing today.
Trying to get my fifteen hundred dollar thing in.
Turn in some garbage.
We're not paying your garbage bill, I'm sorry, I won't make a motion for that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. John?
You are on. Commissioners, this is Resolution two oh two four dash three five, it's about that property up in Powellview off Riggs Road, spoke about a few weeks ago. The statute mentions an RS enforcing a local government's ordinance or resolution, and then there were some questions about, I guess, where the money was going to come from, so this is just kind of a housekeeping measure on our end, and the suspenders for the court, this will be added to our complaint once we file it. But this basically just goes over the history of the case and the resolution that the county will cause the abatement of the public health hazards, and it should be paid out of the general fund, and then made up when it can. This kind of brings up a different conversation, if you guys want to have it now, there are other properties like this, and so I think it makes sense, Christina can speak to this, Will can speak to this, if us maybe setting up a fund in our budget, an abatement fund, that's kind of like our plaza maintenance fund where it reaches a certain point, and then it keep at that point, like a two hundred thousand dollar bucket, to be able to handle these, and it will get refilled as the years go on, as the liens get paid off. We can deal with that down the road, but just wanted to bring that up as an idea. For now, this is just the resolution.
Yeah, I think that was a slow stage.
The only thing I'm, I'm concerned about is if you have an early estimate right on here, but what if the estimate is way more than that? And I also reflect Will's concern that the property owner stays there and just now he's got way more room, and he starts bringing more in. But basically, are we capping this? That's kind of, you know, that's a lot of money, and now let's say the estimate comes in and it's two hundred.
This doesn't act as a cap. I think I mentioned that the early estimate was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It basically gives authorization to abate it, the price is what it is, I agree, if the price comes in at one hundred thousand dollars, I don't.
Are we re-discussing it? I mean, should we put a cap on this? Like I say, I have a real problem with this thing here, but I also, I mean, that's a lot of money there, but what if it does come in for that? What if they hit something, then what do we do?
I guess my answer would be that we're going to be the ones in charge of the procurement, and so we're in charge of the scope, what they do, and who we hire to do it, and so if the full estimate's four hundred thousand dollars, maybe we can pick out the most egregious parts of the abatement and get that taken care of for what's within our budget and.
So would you put a cap on it then?
That's up to you guys, that's up to you guys, I'll be coming back to you, obviously, once we're further down the road, and once we go through with the procurement and get some estimates, it'll get you guys to approve those or negotiate the difference in the scope, we can handle that when we get there. As far as your concern about him bringing more trash onto the property, that's, the point of going to the court is that we can get injunction, that he doesn't do it again, and we can have Louis check on the property, and if there is something there, then come back to the court and file for content.
I think when we're going to put this out for a RFP, some, something, I think that that kind of we need to look at before we say yes, go after it, because we need to see what that is.
We do.
And, yeah, I agree with Brian, that's basically, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just a little worried.
Worried to just sign a blank check right now?
Yeah.
Without seeing some input on what is going to cost? I know we have a responsibility and we're going on that route, but I think that there has to be, has to be more discussion when it comes to, when you start talking four hundred thousand.
We're not, we're not at the blank check phase right now, this is just kind of opening the door.
This needs to be drafted, so there is that option, I think, is where I'm kind of coming from with you.
So I guess my recommendation is just, can we add something to solidify that? Or we're okay with this? Because, you know, I'm, I'm just like, let's not just, yeah.
You're saying, you're saying you're, we're going to abate this, is what we're saying here, but then if it comes back and it's way too high, what do we do then?
Yeah, kind of idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a cap, is there a whatever? Like I say, I have a whole problem with this whole thing, but we need to know the bids first, we're doing an estimate, what if we get in there and now we find something and it's a whole nother deal?
About somebody that gives you a price and then saying, well, there's no cap on it, so there needs to be that final write-off.
Right, you guys might disagree, from my perspective, this is just opening a door to go down the roadways, and then going to the court to get the approvals, get out of ways, get the approval to go onto the property and get a estimate of what all needs to be cleaned up, then we issue the RFP, at that point, we'll get our bids, if we don't like them, we don't have to accept them, and then we can go back to the court and ask for something else if we wanted to. So I, I hear what you guys are saying, I agree with you, I don't think that we need to necessarily change this document today.
Okay, you're our legal advice, so we'll hang you from the toe.
You can ask Mr. Blaine there if you want.
Yeah, I, you know, John raises, I think, a really important point, part of this process is to have this in place so that the county can go onto a property, and once we are on the property, we will have a better idea of what the cost might be, build that into the request for proposals so that the bidders know what they're bidding on. Otherwise, if we don't have this in place and we send out an RFP without having gone onto the property, they're going to err on the side of caution and give us a much higher bid. So I agree with John, I don't think we want the, the cap in this document. If the RFP is published and the cost cannot be too high, we kind of can reevaluate. If you put in a cap on this document from here, I, I don't see any advantage to the county, and I see a lot of downsides.
One, one thing I'll add is, as we get further down the road and we make that call, we want, by never getting the information on exactly what equity is still in the property at that point, because again, we're going to get a lien, and so what we want to make sure we don't do is the cost of the abatement exceeds what's available on the property when we actually pull close, because we won't get our money back, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, I, I wasn't part of the original conversation, but I think we also need to make sure we're not cleaning up the neighborhood, we're cleaning up dangerous situations. I, I don't think we need to go in there and remove a bunch of cars, or just, you know, something along those lines, I mean, I think if it's health and welfare.
It's mostly cars has been the issue of complaints, but there's, there's quite a.
Yeah, you have a thing that you could have fuel in the soil and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that could be there, so as long as you are aware of, I guess, our reticence about, you know, the money that it comes back, you're our legal team. I will make a motion to approve Resolution two oh two four dash thirty-five in authorizing the county to cause abatement of public health nuisance conditions on a certain property. Would you like me to list the address of the property?
There you go.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right. One last thing, it's the document that made in the packet, the exhibits didn't make it in, so I have the exhibits here.
Okay.
They're explained in the document itself, so, etc., we'll update the packet.
So thanks for that, John, thanks, Louis, for all the work that you've been, if you're on, if you're not.
Yeah, thanks, big thanks to Louis, he's done obviously a lot of.
Well, this has been, I don't know, probably years, years, ten years.
Ten years. Will, you have any?
I don't have a, a report this morning, just a, just a quick note, again, just a big shout out to the finance department for all the work on the con study, I think we're tracking to have that implemented as scheduled. Also, thank you to Amy and Kathy for getting all the.
Amy and Kathy for getting all the data entered on the human resources side, so. Just another thank you for all the hard work that's been a significant lift on their part to get that done, so. That's all I have this morning.
Michelle, are we ready now?
Yeah.
I wanted to bring this up with the two of you, and I've already talked to Brian about it, but John advised me that he is working on John Bullser's contract. And we did have a thing where we had to discuss that we were doing wildlife services through the USDA, so I wanted. He asked guidance, and I said I felt better about the three of us kind of making this decision, and you're on the wolf thing, so. What, what are our feelings, and what direction do we give John, do we just normally just process this contract as stated, or are we. Going to make a change at this time, that's basically what I wanted to get from you two.
Just some, some side background, I think the contract renews at the end of next fiscal year, so um, this is just kind of get in front of it if you guys wanted to.
So we have a year.
Yeah, we have a year, but.
Oh, okay, I didn't get that from you, uh, when I read your thing, okay, sorry.
It's okay, but so, but you want to.
I was taking my vacation.
As was I, I probably didn't even mention it, but um. But if you want to get in front of it during our year, try to find someone else, I would then uh USDA, then.
Okay, so there's no question, it's just a thing, just then keep that and talk to Ellie.
Yeah, I'll talk to Ellie.
I just didn't want to answer.
Unfortunately, we didn't get a good response, we asked them to kind of talk to the producers and the people that care about that, and we just aren't seeing. A response, so maybe we'll ask another time, just say.
And answer it.
Need your help understanding what direction you want us to go, because I, I, I think. You know, we, everybody here has cows at some level, but, you know, there, there's people out there that. Spend more time using the services, and that's the people I want to hear from, I, I don't.
I just wanted to bring it up for the three of us, and then I just got a, a little update. And I know that there were three counties involved that just had deprivations, but one of them was Jefferson, just had some sheep. So, it's not like they're leaving, they're around, and I'm facing caving in Snow Mountain this fall, so we'll see how, how well around they are, but yeah.
Great, um I set up a good conversation with Team Governor Kotek with the city uh earlier this week about the biomass plant. She seemed very interested, uh she's written letters of support in the past, but uh we talked more specifically about funding and finding funding options, and she was. You could tell she definitely was interested in finding, you know, we asked about it for about a million dollars, so it was a big ask. And her answer was, we don't have that in any one place, but she thought we kind of went over with her some. Water services or. Fire reduction, or, you know, just different ideas of where that could come from. Uh I also brought up the uh water issues local town. And uh it's just so frustrating because uh prior to the meeting, I've heard two things, I've heard the DEQ doesn't have any money. And that's not what we're moving forward, but then I talked to uh people at Regional Solutions, and they said, oh no, we're just waiting for DEQ to come up with a plan. And so I told that to her, I said, these kids, there's people that aren't able to drink water in their homes, their livestock's having issues. You need to be able to at least figure out what, she seemed kind of embarrassed, actually, because I know they, we've been working with their, her office for quite a while. And so we brought up, at least you need to come up with, if it's DEQ not coming up with a plan, you better get them going. And if there's money, you need to find some money to take care of these people, and again, I, I, I think she understood the issue and said that she would get back to us within uh. A week to two weeks. So she's got about eight days left.
I want to give, one more thing, I want to give a shout out to the Bowman Museum and their staff. Last Friday, I did the memorial for uh Norwood Dale Brock, it was a missing in action uh from the Korean War. And without their help and their research, I would have had one moment to say, and I had three minutes to fill, and they were extremely helpful, very enthusiastic. And I want to thank them publicly for all their help, and between them and my wonderful secretary across here, Sarah, I sounded pretty darn good.
Again, great, anything else before we go to executive session?
Anything, Brian?
I have it.
How about Sheriff, are you, or no, you're not on here today?
Nope.
Okay, be sorry, Bill.
This is our regular session, we have.
I know, and he's quiet.
Okay, we will now go to executive session, county board of commissioners, we're now meeting executive session under ORS one nine two six six. Insulting the council, returning legal rights and dues to the public body. Guard, current litigation or litigation activity, we file, representatives in this meeting designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All our members, I trust, leave the room, representatives in this meeting should simply direct it. Not to report on any deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced, the decision being made in the executive session, the other executive session returned to the session, or the I expect.